Okay, great. We'll have a moment of silent meditation, a pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our thoughts and prayers are with the car accident. I heard there was a fatality on I-79. So our thoughts and prayers are with those families. All three county commissioners are here. So at this time, we will have an election of county commission president for calendar year 2024.
I move to elect Commissioner Secora as our president for the next calendar year.
And I second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Now, the fun part, let's see.
Bye.
No, she wanted me over on this side. She did not want me on that side. Oh, wait. Jeff, you forgot your name.
Well, that happened when she got a little older.
Thank you, guys. Continuing with the agenda. Sorry, Tom, your chair is...
We moved chairs.
Yeah, someone must have turned mine back. You must have turned mine back. The next item on the agenda is the rules and procedure for management of regular meetings of the Montague County Commission.
We really didn't have many changes. We did add a clause at the end, use of electronic devices during meetings. And that's just, I think that speaks for itself.
I put it there.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the rules and procedure as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I also say aye. Any in favor? No? Okay, it's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is consent and approval with the county administrator. Nettie?
We do have vouchers for two weeks, so there'll be two sets of numbers that I have to give today. No exonerations, minutes for December 20th, 2023. Vouchers, these were approved that were paid for December 28th. General County, $28,297.87, 911, 343.49. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,021.82. Camp Muffley, $4,978.98. Mason Dixon Park, $192.11. Recreation Levy, $5,123.91. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $1,003.80.60, 911, 220.22. Assessment valuation, $136.70. For a voucher total for $12.28.23, $43,895.70. Then, this week's vouchers, General County, $296.122.46. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,008.36.21. Camp Muffley, $1,009.60.14. Mason Dixon Park, $630.80. Sorry, $630.18. Mon County Center, $1,002.37.84. Recreation Levy, $200.14. Star City Tiff, $1,004.57.50. ARPA, $19,451.29. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $9,005.47.55. Mason Dixon Park, $41.60. Recreation Levy, $82.32. Assessment valuation, $16,368.46. For a total of $348,935.69. We have physician vacancies for boards and authorities listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for January 3rd, 2024.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent approval items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, and we have no other fiduciary items, correct?
Correct.
Introduction of new employees, personnel changes.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheriff seeks your approval on his appointment as a deputy sheriff of James Cometer. James comes to us from WVUPD. He is certified officer and previous offensive lineman for WVU from 18 to 22.
Move to approve the appointment of Mr. Cometer as a deputy sheriff.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the county.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, you have MECAN 911.
Morning.
Morning.
Montague County Homeland Security and Emergency Management, MECAN 911, has hired a new employee to fill a vacant telecommunications position. Rebecca Jorgensen will begin her duties on January 2nd, 2024. Her monthly salary will be $3,321.98. And as usual, she will need to complete a probationary period. Thank you for consideration for this staffing change.
Move to approve the new employee, Rebecca Jorgensen, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Next, we have Chestnut Ridge Park. There's Philip Keefover. He is starting, let's see, what's his start date? January 8th. Tubing Hill Lieutenant, so this is seasonal, part-time, without benefits, $11 an hour.
Move to approve the employee, Mr. Keefover, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prosecuting attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
I am excited to announce, hopefully, the hiring of two new employees today. The first being Samantha Elkins, who stands beside me. She comes as a past assistant prosecutor in both Harrison and Barber Counties, as well as a law clerk for Lewis and Upsher. She will be filling our vacant abuse and neglect position. I just wanted to give a kind of a quick recap while I'm here to the commission about that role. Those cases, as you know, have grown exponentially over the years, starting in 2000 with 13 petitions, moving to 2008 with 41, and 2018, 167 petitions, at which point previously Perry DeChristopher requested an additional part-time abuse and neglect prosecutor, which you were gracious enough to give us. At that point, the next number was 2022 at 176 petitions. To close out 2023, we had 227 petitions filed. So I say that to you as a primer for what's ahead and to also let you appreciate the task ahead for Ms. Elkins. And so we're grateful that she has come. She lives here in Mon County, and we're grateful that she has accepted this role. And I would ask for your approval as full-time abuse and neglect prosecutor.
Move to approve Attorney Elkins as a part-time or a full-time assistant prosecuting attorney.
Second.
As presented.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good luck.
Yes, we need you.
Yes, we do.
Unfortunately.
The next position that I'd like to introduce and request is for Larry Hazely, Lawrence Hazely. And this is a unique position, and it's exciting for Montague County. There has been a statewide sexual assault kit initiative funded by a Saki program that's purpose was to collect and inventory untested sexual assault kits, as well as evidence associated with those investigations. So things that were sitting in evidence rooms in hospitals, untested. And that was really important because that DNA profile that can be collected from those untested kits and evidence with those cases were then entered or should be entered into the national DNA database. Mon County was at the forefront of that project here in West Virginia. We were the second county in the state to begin to collect untested kits and send them to Marshall for testing. And Larry Hazely was part of that initiative back when it started. So he has been the Safe Commission Law Enforcement appointee since its inception. I took over the prosecutor role in the Safe Commission when Ms. DeChristopher left. And now, we have realized that this state is in need of a Saki statewide site coordinator. And so when we were at the meeting with all of the participants in the Saki grant in West Virginia, Larry couldn't be at that meeting, but very quickly at that table, we realized he was the perfect candidate for that job. And the question was left, where will he be housed? Who can house him? And how can we make sure that that role is protected and valued? And so I was approached. Can the Mon County Prosecutor's Office do that? And so I'm here today requesting that Larry Hazely's position that will be fully grant-funded from the sexual assault initiative be housed within the Mon County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. He has 21 years employed at MPD. He's been retired for a whole 12 days before making this request to you. 14 years as a detective and was instrumental to me in learning how to address those cases and prosecute those cases. And so we're excited to request that he join our team under this grant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Larry.
Thank you.
Welcome, Larry. We are lucky to have you. And it's a grant-paid position, just important to note, so fully paid for outside of county funds. And we couldn't be happier to have someone with your immense qualifications. I've known Larry for years, and he's a great public servant during his time as a police officer, and we look forward to having you around some more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to see you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Unretirement.
We have any more personnel?
No, sir.
Okay, move the next item on the agenda, those comments from the public. We'll now open the comment, public comment section of the meeting. Any member of the public wishing to speak should come forward, raise their hand, and provide their name and address for the record. Please note that time will be limited at the discretion of the president. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. Next item on the agenda is presentation of 2023 year-end report. Nettie?
Well, how would you like me to go about this this year?
Well, how would you guys?
Skim through what you think.
How about if we, we will publish the report. If any commissioners have any particular items that they would like to address.
Sure.
Go ahead and have that.
Okay.
I'll start with you, Tom.
Okay, I think the key is that I'm really proud and honored with the other commissioners that our budget was decreased by 6.9% over the fiscal year, yet we maintain the levy rate the same, which is the lowest rate in the state. And I think that says an enormous amount. And then the other area that I do want to say is that I'm very pleased of the adoption of the ordinance regulating pedestrian vehicle safety. And I believe the community is pleased with that, and hopefully, we will continue to work with the other cities to make sure that it becomes a county-wide program. And I'll leave it at that.
My highlights are the improvements we've made at our parks. It's been a banner year for those, from the pavilion at Camp Muffley to the continued development of our sledding hill at Chestnut Ridge and the improvements to our bunk houses at Muffley.
And the pool opening.
Well, the pool opening, that was the year before.
Oh, that was last year.
But the continued growth of the pool and the memberships and the use that's out there, it's been, it's been a fantastic year. And I commend our Parks Director, JR Petsko, for coordinating that with our three wonderful superintendents now. And our bill, not to steal some of Sean's thunder, because this was, he was a larger point person on this, but the build-out of the preservation kitchen at the Mon County Center is, it's going to go a long way towards helping with the, with food instability in Mon County, and we're glad to be a part of that. It's a, it's a great building and a great project. And I think the rest of the report pretty much speaks for itself. I'll pass along with Sean. I won't take too much time.
Okay, we'll come back if you guys think of anything else. I always, every year, I tend to take a top five of these, these things. And Tom, you hit the first one on the head. The budget this past year was, was tougher than usual because we, we were doing a lot more with less while still keeping your county rural rate the same. The second, my top two, and these are, the top five are in no particular order. I just kind of listed five off. The broadband deployment RFP, which we issued last month, was a big step towards connecting a lot of our neighbors. We just finished the evaluation of the two proposals that we received. We sent off questions over the break. Those questions are due back next Thursday, and then we'll continue negotiation with the two entities that provided proposals. But I really think, in both proposals, Joe's focused on the western end. So a lot of what we had to find and discovered in our strategic plan in the most critical need areas was defined as the western end, and that's where both proposals focused on. So we're going to have some, some connectivity in 2024, and I'm looking forward to it. The third one was the third-party agreement with MUB, Westridge, and the commission. This agreement was probably, it wasn't the most complicated. I think the most complicated was the Longview Pil, or pilot program. But this was the most, took the most effort to really just drag the three parties together and, and, and working with the state. The state was the fourth party. We went down, we didn't get as much as we wanted in our grant. We actually, the, the numbers were flipped on us, and we were applying for an 80% match, and we ended up having to find 80% locally and get 20% from the state. But we still, through all this, and it was about two years working on this project, we finally got it done. In February, we did a, we did a letter to the WDA, which confirmed that what we had to do to receive the grant that they had offered us. And then we went to work on the MOU, which we didn't get finished until late fall. So it was like 250 something days working on just getting an MOU between the three parties and, and dragging the three parties together and doing something very unique. It's unique for MUB. It was unprecedented support for MUB in a community, is unprecedented support of a developer, and the commission, all working together for the betterment of the citizens. So that was one of the most important things I think we did last year. Jeff, Commissioner Arnett hit on it, the improvements at the Mon County Center. We finished the, the preservation kitchen this fall, right in time to take a bunch of Tom's apples and process those. And the whole, the whole center, and I have to, all the credit goes to Rachel Mitchell, our director at the, at the center. She came in, bought into the vision we hadn't, and she's taken the vision we had, and she's making it become reality, making that kitchen an entrepreneurial kitchen, a teaching kitchen. It's, it's everything we ever wanted it to be. So that was a big step is finishing the preservation section. And we still have other, other parts of the building that can be built out in the future. So there's still more to come with that center, but I'm really, really proud of the preservation part of it, really proving what we stepped out on a ledge and put money into the, into the kitchen a couple of years ago, and it's really paying off. The last thing is, I'm surprised it wasn't the first on everybody, is mountaintop.
I know.
Starting production.
Completely.
And that was a really important thing, to finally see them producing. And now we're talking about, in the past year, you've heard of a new bridge across the river so that they can, they, the mountaintop investors would commit to another expansion of the plant, which could bring another 700 employees here. So that was one of the most important things that happened in the past year. And it was all, a lot of it was the seed money that the commission put into it a couple of years ago into the infrastructure. We put $3.1 million into the sewer. We put another three point, or 3.5 in the sewer. We put 3.1 into electrical to build the infrastructure, to make that plant a reality. So it was big, them going into production this year. So that's five. The last, I had an honorable mention because it's really not us, but we did provide the seed money years ago to start the, the Health Department Smile Express program. And in the past year, through the efforts of Tiffany Summerlin, they had a $500,000 edna grant to buy another Smile Express vehicle. That vehicle will be a little smaller and nimbler, can go more places than the, the large RV can go, and it will bring service to a lot more people in our region. One thing about the Smile Express program, they've, they've outgrown Mon County. They're serving six or seven counties in our region. And again, bringing, bringing dental service to these kids that otherwise would never receive that, that care. So we didn't directly do anything to it. Something we did to start it two, three years ago has, has allowed, allowed this to grow. But I really want to commend the Health Department and Tiffany for her efforts in bringing this grant, because I really think that's a real important part of, of what we've done in this year. The list as it is, it would be impressive for any county. I think any county would be happy to pull off four or five things from that list. And it wouldn't happen without the cooperation and the communication between the commissioners, working with the public and all these different entities. Constantly reminded, I keep track of the years, over the years, any votes that we've ever had that weren't unanimous. And in my tenure, there's only been seven. So that's, that means that's just not, we don't sit back and just agree to everything. We do work it out. We figure out ways to work it out so everybody can, everybody can get what they want and bring, bring the perspective that they bring to every project. So this is a, really a group effort, and I commend the commission, our staff, on everything that they've done to make this report possible, so.
The one other that I've forgotten, and I looked at Granville, and I thought, how could I not mention this, is the entire I-79 exit 155.
The infra grant.
Infra grant, that we didn't get a penny last year. And we reconsidered it and reorganized and went to the meetings. And we got $54 million from the federal government to go along, and Joe Stoutler was key in getting the, the state funding for another $66 million that we got. So we now actually have a plan to really change the whole opening to Montague County and also multimodal to get people out to Mylan Park. And I think this is going to be a major change that will, for the next 50 years, have a major impact. And you have that with the Harmony Grove exit, the two infrastructure. And I think that has a lot to do with, and I agree with Sean, the three county commissioners. And we've attended more meetings than we should have on this. And sometimes we thought we were just attending meetings and we were going over and over again. But with the persistence of, you know, the three commissioners each pushing the correct buttons, we were able to get this. So very excited about that.
One last thing, I'd like to, this was a Christmas present for this year-end report. It was a Christmas present for the commissioners. We didn't pull this together. Our staff did. I want to commend our office manager, Colleen Kuhn, who did most of the legwork pulling this together. We just reviewed it and said, hey, this is great. And then, before it was published, our administrator made sure that she put her, her stamp on it. So thank you, guys, for, for this. And again, this is a team effort. Do I have a motion to approve the report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Colleen Kuhn Grants. There's no grants?
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, Correspondence.
The only, I have a couple of items, just the two proclamations that came in while, during the holiday break from the governor's office, the December 22nd extended holiday and the December 29th extended holiday.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything?
I have one more.
I'm sorry.
I got a check for $1,019,972.50.
You kept it from, I've been waiting for. Wow.
And this is, this is part of the opioid settlement money. So this will be deposited today, Mr. Bloom, and so you can quit asking.
You pulled one over on me. And these are the funds that we will administer.
Yes.
From the commission.
These are the local government share funds that we will, they will, we will be administering.
Wow.
So you all will need to develop.
We'll need to figure out.
A plan.
A process on how you're going to take application, whatever you're going to do.
So everybody basically needs to call Tom.
Please don't call Tom.
And ask for money.
And I'll tell you why I'm so excited, is because the first numbers we heard from the state was only a quarter of a million. So this is a lot more than we were expecting, and now we have to go through the process. I think that's, that's the easy part, getting the money.
I would, I would ask, and I know this is not going to be, this is not going to happen this way, but I would ask that people put requests in writing to the commission.
Yes.
Do not send them to individual commissioners.
Please.
It's, it makes things complicated. It would just be better if formal requests came in writing, pending whatever process you all decide.
Right, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to meet at our staff meetings to figure out how to do that.
Okay.
Wow.
Any correspondence, Jeff?
No.
That you've received?
None.
I do have one piece of correspondence that came in, I believe, yesterday. It was the calendar 23 end-of-year report for the Little Control and Recycling Program.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I did want to mention that. I don't think there's anything else under correspondence. Okay, unfinished business? We have no unfinished business? New business, to set the days and times for regular commission business to be conducted. Nettie, you want to explain?
As you are well aware, we have our meetings on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. as for the foreseeable future. I don't see that changing, so that, that is the schedule. So I will, I will create a schedule of every Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. I don't think that's necessary. But that's published on our website.
I think the, the purpose is, and why this is an agenda item, is in our rules of procedure, it says every year, we will establish the meeting time for regular, regular conducting of our business. So we want to be in compliance and actually make sure that we made it clear that, because there could be changes. It could be somebody gets, you know, has a job and wants to try another day or whatever. But for the public's purpose, our meeting days are regular Wednesdays at 10 o'clock. We will have work sessions Wednesday mornings and afternoons as time permitted, and then on Fridays, we do staff reports at night. Those are our official times that we are actually conducting business as the commission. Obviously, that's not the only times, but, so to be in compliance with our own rules of procedures, we have this agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the times and dates for regular business in Mon County Commission as presented?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval, the 2024 holiday schedule.
This schedule is dictated by West Virginia State Code. I will put a note, Juneteenth is not included on this schedule because the legislature needs to make that change to the statute in order for that to be actually included. So that is why it is not on the schedule, because we will get a million calls about it. So January 15th, February 19th, May 14th, May 27th, June 20th, July 4th, September 2nd, October 14th, November 5th, November 11th, November 28th and 29th. December 24th is a half a day, December 25th, full day, December 31st, half a day, and December, or I'm sorry, January 1st of 2025. We include that because obviously, you're not going to meet on Christmas or New Year's Eve, so. So those will be holidays. You guys will need to decide at some point in the future about what you want to do on the meetings for, if you want to do an alternate day for the two Wednesday meetings that will be canceled because of the holidays.
Yeah.
So you'll need to decide whether or not to, and we could do that.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Depending on how busy we are.
Thanks for pointing out the Juneteenth, because that is, we do get a lot of calls, I assume, because it's not on there, but it's not in statute. That's why it's not an official day. But when the governor, the way he's handled the last two years, he's issued a proclamation.
Correct.
Which at that time will make it known and, and so.
But it has to include language that gives the county commissions the ability to close their buildings or to grant that holiday.
And that goes back to the two proclamations that you had there. I know you guys got a lot of calls when the proclamations were announced that the holidays for the 22nd and 29th are being given. But we can't do anything officially and say, yes, here's the proclamation, and you do have this day off until we see the proclamation.
Correct. And a lot of times.
To make sure it has the language in it.
They will do a news release or a press release and announce it, but they don't actually post the proclamation to the governor's website for sometimes days. So, you know, if it happens on a Friday, it could be Monday or Tuesday before we ever see the actual proclamation.
Are you, are you saying that the news or Bloom News gets, gets ahead of their skis sometimes?
Never.
All right, so we have the holiday schedule presented. Do I have a motion to approve the schedule as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did want to bring up a corollary item, agenda item, that is not on the agenda, but I think we need to deal with. And it's involved, it's involving these holidays. As you're aware, the holiday on the 22nd and 29th was announced late in the year. The first one was announced only days before the 22nd. The second was announced only days before the 29th. So we, in our policy, we have use or lose. Our employees have use or lose. We're allowed to carry over so much of their, of their hours into the next year. So there could have been employees that were, let me, let me back up a little bit. So when this happens, and again, we have to verify. So when this happens, and again, we have to verify with payroll, but when this happens, someone that was on leave might have that Saturday, that day booked as PTO. Well, PTO comes off and it gets booked as a holiday, because everybody gets the holiday, whether you planned on having that day off already or not, you get the holiday. So if you had leave scheduled that day, that leave would conceptually go back in your, in your, in your bank. The, the problem that it caused, and I think is an unintended consequence, and it's probably a few employees, that employees that were on use or leave, use or lose time, scheduled time on those days at the end of the year because they had to use it before they lost it. So when those two holidays got scheduled, it essentially put two more days back in their bank that they would essentially lose if they were planning to, right up until the end of the year. So I think that we're going to have a longer conversation with payroll, but I, I think that the commission can address this by just issuing a directive that anybody that was in that situation that would have lost time due to the holidays, they can have, they can have their, the leave that they're allowed to, to roll over increased by two days. And then that way, it won't, nobody will be harmed by that. So.
I think.
Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense. And I think it's, I think we can make an official motion on that at this point.
It would be.
Or we need to wait.
It would just be this one, because we, to make sure, that'd be just a year, not a yearly thing. It's just.
Right.
And then we deal with it each time it happens.
This time, but you, two days is correct, but it could be a employee only had one of those days scheduled.
Right. We don't know.
So it could be up to two days.
Up to two days.
Yes. Okay. Well, how about if I suggest this? I would suggest that the employees in this circumstance, we made whole, if, if we made a one-time ruling that employees be allowed to carry up to two extra days over from 2023 to 2024, in excess of the already established limits as set by commission previously. This waiver would only be, be for carryover from '23 to '24, and all other limits would remain in full force of effect. So I've essentially made a motion. Or you, do I have a motion to?
I will make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bert, you want to talk it to death, further discussion?
No, that's good.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of setting scheduled dates for 2024 border review, review and equalization.
As you know, this is something that we have to do every year. Luckily, we don't have to do this in October. But for the February border review and equalization, you're opening up on February 1. You will meet again on February 2, February 7, February 9, February 14, and February 20. And then you will adjourn, sign, and die. So.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that will be published in a newspaper.
Yes.
And on our website.
Great.
Okay. Consideration to approve requisition four for the University Town Center Series 2023A Development District Number Four Administrative Expense Fund.
This is the monthly requisition that is cost associated with Munichap 20218.75.
Do I have a motion to approve requisition number four?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration to approve requisition number 82 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Expense Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $6,003.1625. And again, this is Munichap, and this is for the excise tax district.
And I said, and I said the Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund. I said the expense expense fund. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any other?
That is.
Okay. Reports from elected officials or department supervisors. Delegate Stattler.
The honorable delegates.
Honorable, most honorable.
Yeah, I don't know why they put that on the mail. They don't know me.
And snowboard champ.
There you go. I will say to you that first, I want to congratulate you, Sean, Commissioner Secor, on the presidency. But I will also tell you, from my point of view, it doesn't matter which one of you are the president of the organization. You guys are well working together, and I think that you're moving the county forward by working together. It's a cooperative effort that goes forward. And I say all that buttering you up for the position that I'm going to ask for here in a, in a few moments. But I also want to extend to you that Senator Oliverio and I are ready to go into session next week, and we are ready to work for you and with you on legislation. We don't know all of the legislation that's going to be before us more, any more than anyone else. And I'm sure there's going to be some come through that Renetta will catch that we didn't catch down there. And so I offer to you, make sure that you keep us advised early on. Some of this legislation, and I would say that to the cities also, that some of this legislation, when it gets before us, we don't see it until after it comes out of a particular committee. I hate to tell you, I would like to be one of those that says I read every bill as it's put into the hopper. I do read the first part of, see what the bill's about. I don't read every one of those things that's out there, because some of them don't stand a snowball's chance of getting through. So therefore, there's just so much time that you can be available. But at the same time, they are of major concern to some people out there, no matters. They want to know where they're going to be at. So sometimes if you alert us that some of those bills that's out there, then we can take a look at it. And if we think it's going to move, we can possibly go to the committees that's going to come before, the chairman or the vice chairs of those organizations, and talk to them and tell them what the concerns would be if they move forward. And of course, you always, we always have the opportunity to amend or to stop the legislation if at all possible. So you guys know how the system works. The faster you can get the information to us, the easier it is to stop it. The thing that I'm here reporting today, and the reason they didn't come up under public comments, is you guys put a timeline on the public comments, and this may take a little time. I've been thinking long and hard about, we've got to do something for emergency services. We've been working all over the summer to try and come up with some things that can address some of the concerns of facial of the volunteer firemen in their areas. We've been working with EMS. I still don't have the exact level where we need to be with either organization. But I've been thinking that some of the things that we have done in the past that worked, we had an EMT shortage everywhere in the state. And of course, $10 million was made forward, and I forget what the governor's initiative, what he gave that program for the first responders. But it was very successful in getting paramedics and EMTs trained throughout the state and putting them in the roles out there working. And through that, and other things that was done with that same area, we need to do something similar to that in Montague County, I believe. We need to get started. We need to make a pilot program here in the county that can be looked at for the statewide. If you look at the volunteer firefighting and look at the average age of volunteer firefighters, not only in Montague County, but across the state, it's up there. The age is up there. They, they would like to retire the, the folks that's out there, but they simply do not see anybody that's there, ready and willing to take over, nor do they have the experience. So the first ask I would ask of this commission as of today is over the next four years, I would like for you to commit up to 15 junior firefighter trainee scholarships to be utilized through the West Virginia University Extension Service, the, the fire service in Jackson's Mill, to train young people that may be interested in going to camp and start looking at the junior firefighters' system and how it works. It's a very successful program that they've had in place, and it's been there for a while. It's about $450 per scholarship. And the reason I'd like to put it out over some years, and I've thought about this long and hard, and I've talked to a couple of you just briefly about it, is I thought about, we have 12 volunteer fire companies, one from each volunteer fire company. But the reason I thought I would rather just open it up to possibly giving out 15 scholarships, we know young people that may want to travel and go together. Maybe they don't feel that they want to go by themselves, but would want to go with a friend. And I really don't care. I really don't care where they come from or how they get to there, if it's a way of getting, starting to, to put people back in our system at an earlier level. And that's why I kind of would like to ask that you do it. And I don't know how you base it, where you come up with the funding from. That part I'm really unclear on. I do believe at some point in time, that I talked to President Secor just a little bit, but at some point in time, I do know that you guys have that money that coming through the state, through the fire. And, and I know that you guys are going to be looking at how that could be utilized. And I've not talked to the association, so they may not be in favor of this altogether. They may have guns out there ready to blast me when I walk out. I don't know. I don't think so. But I think at some point, we need to look at a training system that was similar to the EMT and the EMS that was out there. Because these firefighters that we put out there, they work, especially in the outlying areas, they work with the emergency services, with the EMTs and stuff anyhow. So some of the junior firefighters not only needs to have money that they can pay to take firefighter one, which is expensive. And that's part of where we need to find the funding source. So we get the training to them, but they don't have the money to take the test. We need to look at how we can put money aside to do some of that. Also, at the same time, I would encourage anybody that goes into the volunteer fire companies to look at also becoming an EMT, so that they're prepared, they can also do other things that's out there. Because part of the emergency services is so more complicated today than it was in the years past. So I would like for this commission, at some time, we sit down, along with the associations and whoever, any interested parties, and let's start working on something that we can see out into the future that will change the way firefighting is done, not only in Montague County, but across the state. Some of it could be even looking at training. What does truly need to be put into training into place for these young people to go into it? What can we do to make it until they're interested in doing this? Part of it may be including the IMTEC, the school system, the WVU Firefighters Academy. Put it all together. But do we really need to send them to Jackson's Mill? Could we do some of this through the year, right here within the county, and have people coming in, building our things? So I will tell you, I stay awake at night sometimes, thinking about all this stuff. And I just wanted to bring some of the proposal to you today to start thinking about, but I really would like to see at some point in time, you do look at a way that you could fund some of these junior firefighters, and let's start getting some hope out there of the people that, that we have another group of, of people ready to come in and take over for us. Because if we do not believe that we need these people, we're sadly mistaken. We need them, and we need them in the worst kind of ways. We hope we never need them. But if we do, we want them there, and we want them ready, and we want them trained.
Does anybody have anything they wanted to ask Delegate Stattler?
I think you laid it out pretty, pretty well.
I forgot that we did get, what's around $170,000 for, to be used for something in that arena.
I don't remember. I'm sorry. I don't remember the, the amount.
Yeah. And I will tell you that I received a call yesterday, so some of that money is still, and I tell the fire associationists all the time, that some of this money is still fluctuating just a little bit into the sense that we have counties coming to us now. And two of them comes to mind, and one called me yesterday because he had sent a letter. And clearly, the way the legislation was written out, they have an argument that they could present, saying they should be receiving that money also, even though it's not a formal thing that they had done as a commission, that they put the tax out there. They clearly collected the tax, just the same as you guys do, and then put it toward firefighting and some other things that was out there. And they've had that commitment and show a record of it.
Blessings.
Over the last six to eight years. So it is already there.
Yeah.
And then one county actually gets additional money through oil and gas, and they have committed that money to them. So they have asked, and really, it's, they sent me the letters, but it's not up to me to make that decision. But I did tell the Secretary of Homeland Security that I felt, in my point of view, that they had a legitimate case, and they should be included in on the 23 counties on the second fund that we're talking about.
It's two fundings.
Yeah, the second fund. So I, so that would bring it up to 25 counties. So clearly, and I will tell you that the more counties we put into it, the less it comes back to the home county. But I want to be fair about it.
Yeah.
If they have it, then if you guys lose a little bit of money, then you can scream at me if you want. But I, I want to be fair about it. I want it set up for the state.
I have one question, Delegate Stattler. You had asked for a commitment of 15 scholarships, $450 apiece. Was that a, each year, or just you want to?
Each year.
Get it started out. So $6,750 a year is what you're looking for, to try to get 15 of these younger firefighters? And then you might retain five or eight of them if you're lucky. So.
Can I ask to formalize that? Did if you can either provide, provide our staff with just kind of an email just summarizing, summarizing what you'd like? I don't even know if it needs to be a full grant request, since we're coming up on grant time. But we could, we could talk about that in staff reports, but we'll provide you direction as far as how, what you need to do to at least throw that in the hopper and get that idea started.
Yeah. I mean, I for one am certainly encouraged by your, your request. And I think it's a, it's a good solution.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a low dollar, high return if you get people to participate.
And I apologize to you for coming late, but I will tell you, they met with us during the, I believe it was the last interim sessions, and they went over the junior firefighting role and how it was. And I'm sitting there in that interim meeting, and I'm thinking, you know, what a great idea for Montague County to lead the way to do this. Some counties already does it, and I'm not sure which ones, but I just thought this would be a great way. The only reason I chose four years is to give it some time to look out there, because it seems that these young students, when they come in, are around ninth, 10th grade, 11th in that area. So you give them four years to mature out, if it takes up that. They may, you know, they can actually go into the roles earlier. It's limited on what they can do. They can participate with the fire companies going out. They can't go into the fires and that type of thing. But we all know, sitting here, we all know that the most of the time that these volunteer fire companies are out there, they are not fighting fires.
Yeah.
They are doing everything else under the sun to help the communities. If we get this nomad getting, it's supposed to be coming this weekend, guarantee you, the firefighter is going to be out there at some point in time. I guarantee you, over there on the interstate today, that there is volunteer fire companies over there, working, trying to make that situation better for the people that's out there. Some things they can't do. But I guarantee you, they're first on this thing of getting there and going out there. And so, you know, if we can get these younger people interested in this, and know it's more that service for all than about themselves, I just think it's a, it's very cheap on spending money.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Got several. First of all, there have been about a half a dozen meetings set up by different groups, whether it was EMS or MAP, for the senators and delegates. And I, I personally want to thank Delegate Stattler and Senator Oliverio. You went to every one of them. And I went to several of them. And I'm just really pleased. That is the only way we're able to communicate from locally to, at the state level. But I do want to appreciate that you two showed up at all the meetings. Second, I want to congratulate WVU. They won a bowl. And not only that, but because the coach got doused with mayonnaise, pantry plus more, I didn't even know about it, when, got national attention. And we got $10,000. And it's been wonderful. And because of that, we're getting a lot more contributions from the community, because they saw that. So I, it's real exciting, and I'm real excited about that. Third.
And they want to douse you with mayonnaise.
I don't want to say, I don't want to talk about that.
So anybody that wants to contribute, if they raise $10,000, they will douse Commissioner Bloom with mayonnaise, and I'll make sure they use the jalapeno.
And I really dislike mayonnaise, I will say. Third, exciting news, because you had mentioned about parks. The sledding hill, we started making snow yesterday. We look forward to January 12th to 14th, that weekend. We believe we're looking at the weather forecast and the precipitation and the combination. So we're looking forward that we should have that sledding hill open on the 12th, 13th, and 14th.
Should have reservations.
Yes. You need to call for reservations, please. So you may want to call.
Go on their website.
Yeah, go on their website.
Go on their website, not, not Bloom News or, or, yeah. But please go to their website.
It's ticketed, so they have to have a ticket to, and only so many are sold per time.
Okay, let's see. I have.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And the fourth one, I want to thank administration and also the county commissioners. Several months ago, I was asked and requested to attend an immigration hearing in Sterling, Virginia. It was continued for today at 1:00. I contacted them and said I could not go there, but because of the commission's willing, they are allowing me to do it, and the judge has allowed me to be part of the hearing today. And that's why we don't have a work session in the afternoon. And I want to thank them for allowing the schedules, allowing me to be a part of this immigration hearing. Thank you. So, that is it.
Commissioner Renetta?
Yes. I was taken a little back by the year in review. I don't, I have trouble looking back. I always like to look forward. But I would like to, of course, recognize that I venture to say, nothing here happens without Renetta and Colleen. So, thank you for the year. Thank you for everything you do. We would be, I would be completely lost here without you, both of you, so thank you very much. I'd like to give a thank you to our maintenance and construction crews who did a really good job this year. They're running a new software system. It's running extremely efficiently. We've heard nothing but good things from our employees and our department heads. Scott Finch is doing a great job with that department, and both of those crews seem to really have their head on and doing great work for the county. I'd like to echo Commissioner Bloom's thanks to Delegate Statler and Senator Oliverio and our other elected officials. We mentioned it, Joe and Mike, because they're the ones we see the most. And I know there's work being done by our other elected officials, but thank you so much for all your efforts and all your work. Looking forward, this coming year, Tom touched on the Infogrant, and Sean did as well. We're looking forward to that Exit 155. Ever since I've been on, all I've heard about is Exit 155, Exit 155. So, hopefully, we're going to start seeing some action on that. The funds are there, so that's a really exciting prospect. We also have some exciting corporate prospects coming to the county. We all heard about Inbio, the instant manufacturer that's committed to come to Montague County. Their year is up on their testing here within the next, I don't know how many months that they've been getting their process attempted to be approved. Hopefully, that all goes well, and we start seeing some progress on that project. That's very exciting. A lot of jobs. We saw a press release yesterday about the LG. We don't know anything about it. What was published in Metro News and in the newspapers is probably all that we know about it, but who knows? That could be something. The hydrogen hub coming. The point is that things are happening in Montague County with the expansion of our industrial park and our bridge over, well, muddy water for lack of a better term, will enable that industrial park to continue to expand and hopefully even bring in more jobs and good-paying jobs and jobs for good, hard workers that are desperately needed in the area. And hopefully, we'll bring people in to fill those as they come. We look forward to the fire money coming in from the state. Delegate Statler continues to confuse us with how that's all coming through, but I believe it's a process that we're going to work through, and hopefully that can help do that. The opioid check cleverly disguised by our administrator, that look forward to that process. There's a lot that needs to be done in recovery and prevention, and we look forward to working with MCR and the agencies in that group and everyone else in the county. It's not relegated, our treatment prevention is not relegated just to that center on the hill. I think it's important to know that there are other agencies in this town, even downtown and other areas that are working hard in treatment and prevention. And we look forward to working with them and administering this money to make a difference in our county. And finally, fixing Brockway, please. It's on the agenda, but the state, it's going to happen, hopefully. And when I drive here, I can not have to go to Glot Felty's and get new struts when I'm done. So, that's all I've got. That's enough for me today.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll be very brief. Joe, when you were talking, there's one thing that I would like to have you pull the school board and see what their interest is. But when I went to my last WV Corp. board meeting, I asked them about covering schools. Right now, we're prohibited by statute for our organizations like ours, private risk pools, to cover schools. And they said it would have to take a change in the legislation. But I know I've talked to President Lidle about this a number of times. He keeps, ever since I mentioned it to the possibility, he keeps bringing it back to me. And what that would do, I mean, municipalities and counties can already use our risk pool, but schools can't. And we have a sister corporation in Virginia that covers schools and covers most of the schools in Virginia. But we can't do that here by statute. And I'd like to understand, this might be one of those things that you got to come and work on for a couple of years to see, you know, who would be against, obviously, the BRIM would be against this because it would take business away from them. But, you know, it would also provide competition too, to make BRIM better. So, there's a lot of, and there's a lot of kind of favored status with BRIM in statute, and a little competition or a little change could probably help that. So, it might be something that, you know, again, that might be a long range. In two, three years, we may be able to get something that would be passed. But it would give all the 55 school boards in this state the flexibility to move over to a lot cheaper and more focused insurance. I know that when we moved over, we saved about 30%. And the service, we were worried about the service, and the service is really focused on county and municipal governments, not focused on commercial entities. So, it's really focused towards us. I think the service has been completely, I'm pleasantly surprised, and it's a lot better than we were getting from a commercial entity, and we're paying a lot less. And we can give all the school boards that same option to move over. I think there's only like three counties in the state that haven't moved over to our risk board, and it's because it's working. And the ones that haven't, there's some relationship with an insurance company, and that's why it hasn't. But I would like for the school boards to consider that option, because, again, that affects everybody. If the school boards get to pay less in insurance premiums, that should help drive costs down, which we all pay property taxes for schools. So, that's just something I'd like you to look into. Other than that, it's been a great break. We're still busy doing the break. I'm glad, I thank my broadband team for, we got all the questions out to proposals. I'm looking forward to a really interesting 2024. And you're right, when we mention certain things in our year-end report, you're going to slight somebody, or you're going to leave something out. Like Gabe was sitting there, one of our 2024 things is we appointed Gabe. This commission is the one that appointed Gabe. And, or there's just so many other things. There's, and it really is, thanks for pointing out our maintenance staff, but all of our staff, all of our county staff, they're providing these services. It's really a reflection on the whole county and all of our employees. So, thanks, everybody, for a very productive 2023, and I'm looking for an even more productive 2024. With that, I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.